Ladies and gentlemen, let me call this meeting to order. Before we begin, let me thank the people from Culinary Arts. Basically, they gave us a dinner a little while ago. Brisket, sausage, beautiful cake, a very delicious cake, and what could I say? A tremendous meal in there. These people are already, I already say for five-star restaurants, but thank you for the Culinary Arts students. I don't know if they're still here, but thank you very much for the meal they provided. It was fantastic. Probably, for me, one of the best meals I've had in a long, long time, so thank you very much. At this time, I want to call the meeting to order and establish we do have a court in Basilio Villarreal. President Jay Peña.
Present.
Eduardo Eri Ramírez.
Present.
Dr. Veronica Barrera.
Present.
Noe Castillo.
Present.
John A. Pope, the fourth.
Present.
And Iliesar Velázquez.
Present.
Okay, Mr. Velázquez, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it is based, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Noe Castillo, can you lead us in a little prayer? Yes, sir.
If everyone could bow their heads for a minute. Lord, thank you, as we gather here today, for your presence here with us at this board meeting. I want to pray for all the staff, the students, the staff, and everyone on this board to make the right decisions as we move forward. God bless all the staff in all the districts and everyone present here today, and take care of all our families, our children, as we move forward. In Jesus' name, pray. Amen.
Let's go to Section 3, Approval of the Minutes, Special Board Meeting, November 3 of the year 2023, and Special Board Meeting, November 16 of the year 2023. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Second by Noe. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Public forum? Okay. At this time, we'll go to, basically, Board Member Recognition Month of January, the 2024. Mr. Peña.
Yes, good evening, members of the board. Audience, we do have a presentation for our school board members this evening. On behalf of the whole school district, the School Board of Trustees, we want to thank you for the dedication and, you know, all the service and the years that you provide for our school district, our students, our staff. You know, it does not go unnoticed. So, thank you on behalf of our students and staff, and the entire school district and our community, for the endless hours that you provide our school district. And sit back and enjoy the presentation this evening.
Good evening, board members. Board President, Mr. Peña. January is officially School Board Recognition Month in the state of Texas. Each January, school districts across the state honor community volunteers who serve on their school boards. In Texas, school boards are elected by the voters who entrust them to do what's best for students. The main function of the school board is to provide local citizens governance and oversight of education. Though the ultimate responsibility for education rests within the state, Texas has delegated much of the authority to local communities who elect their local school trustees to govern the school district. The idea behind this structure of shared responsibility is that while some education policy issues are best addressed at the state level, others are far better addressed by our local community. This year's theme is "Locally-Elected: Community-Connected." If there's one lesson we've learned from the past few years in education, it's that good things happen when we come together. As we step into a new year, let's continue leveraging the power of community. Regardless of your advocacy role, there will always be ways that you can make a difference for our students. By working together, we can address challenges, foster inclusivity, create a nurturing environment for learning. When we commit to actively supporting and advocating for students, we ensure that we feel seen, that they feel seen, heard, and most of all, supported. RGC GISD Board Members, as you advocate for policies that prioritize students' well-being and education at the community level, you are helping build a robust, supportive environment that fosters growth, learning, and success for every student. Thank you for the countless hours you sacrifice for our school district family and continue to stay community-connected. At this time, I would like to recognize the RGC GISD Career and Technology Education Department, under the direction of Mrs. Adelina Villarreal, the Culinary Arts Gruya High School teacher, Mr. Omar Inojosa, and his students, Marisol Vázquez, Maritza Lucatero, and Omar de la Garza, the Culinary Arts students from Rio Grande City High School, led by their teacher, Jeanette Garza, and the engineering teacher, Mr. Delpino Garza, who also contributed to the gift that was given to the school board members earlier. The students are Lian González, Alexandra Barrera, Jacob Hassan, and Julissa Orozco. Also, a special thanks to the Rio Grande City High School Drama Instructor, Mr. Roque Vera, and the RGC CISD librarians, who helped gather these students who are here this evening. I am going to call out the name of the school and the student who will be representing the school this evening for our little skit. Gruya High School, Sara M. Salinas. Preparatory for Early College High School, Victoria Kaué. Rio Grande City Student, Cameron Peña. Academy for Academic Enhancement Middle School, Adriak Elizondo, and Adrian Vialobos. Gruya Middle School, Reginaldo Chávez. Ringo Middle School, Amber Lynn García. Veterans Middle School, Jorge Garza, and Ryder Santa María. Academy for Academic Enhancement Elementary, Ivana Solís. Alberto Encelia Barrera Elementary, Danae de la Garza. Alto Bonito Elementary, Kayden Requéniz. Dr. Mario Ramírez Elementary, Kayli Andrade. General Ricardo Sánchez Elementary, Mariely López. Gruya Elementary, Amara, Amaraín, Amaraín Barrera. And I practiced that one, I'm sorry if I massacred your name. JNO Inojosa Elementary, Paige Soto. La Unión Elementary, Joselyn Hernández. Ringo Elementary, Julian Sainz. Roque Guerra Junior Elementary, Zoe Bermúdez. And Early Childhood Academy, Esperanza de la Torre. I would also like to give a special thank you to all the principals, directors, and community members who donated either gifts or items for the gift baskets that we gave this evening, and also for helping me plan today's event. Ms. Nidia Benítez, Ms. Jessica Terán Sainz, Ms. Martita Barrera, and Mrs. San Juanita Olivares, thank you for your help in organizing this event.
Me, Ryder, a curious and enthusiastic sixth grader, ready for a journey through the exciting opportunities our school district has to offer. One day, Ryder learns about the various clubs, sports, and activities available at school. From math clubs to soccer teams to Odyssey of the Mind, the options seem endless. I think I'll join a club, or a sport, or, or there's just so much to choose. Let's look at some of our opportunities, huh? I'm on the football team tackling challenges and scoring touchdowns. Join us for the field of game.
That sounds fun.
Swing, hit, and run. Being on the softball team is a home run of fun. Come join us on the field.
Softballs feel cool.
That looks cool. Okay, let's see more opportunities here.
Sprint, jump, throw. It's all about the speed and strength on the track. Ready to race toward success?
Running a relay, running a relay sounds pretty cool.
Music fills the air as we create melodies together. Join the band for a symphony, symphony of friendship and harmony.
Bounce sounds pretty awesome.
Creating music sounds interesting, huh?
Yeah.
Through the spirit, dance with grace, cheerleading and routine bring, bring energy to every place.
Ooh, cheering for the school sounds cool.
Let's spice things up. Culinary Arts is where you can cook up a storm and savor the flavors of creativity.
Look at that cake.
Ooh, baking a cake would be nice.
Upholding justice and serving the community, law enforcement is where dedication meets duty.
Being a police officer here sounds pretty cool.
Challenge your mind. UIL competitions are where we test our wits and learn something new every time.
Learning UIL could be pretty fun.
Performing art.
Lights, camera, action. Theater art is where stories come alive, and everyone's a star.
Drama sounds pretty awesome.
Colors and shapes create a masterpiece. Join the art studio to express yourself in endless ways.
Painting could be fun, like Bob Ross.
Yeah.
Viva la música. Mariachi band brings the vibrant sounds of our culture to life.
Mariachi is cool, it's kind of like band.
You, you can sing in that one, too.
Robots, gadgets, and innovation. In the robotics club, we build future, one circuit at a time.
I think I would like to join robotics.
That sounds fun. Create robots.
Discover the wonders of medicine. Medical studies pave the way for, for a future in healthcare.
Being a doctor sounds fun. Helping people is awesome.
Sounds interesting. Let's see over here.
Clippers buzzing creativity following barbering classes let you sculpt your way to style.
Cutting hair sounds pretty fun.
Dive into the world of books at the library. Reading is an adventure waiting to unfold. Perhaps you could write your own adventure. Join us.
It's like there's so many worlds.
You can jump into any one.
Keep it, keep it running smoothly. Computer maintenance ensures our tech is top-notch and glitch-free.
Sounds interesting, huh?
Tech team would be pretty cool to join.
From fields to barns, FFA is where we cultivate passion for agriculture and care for our furry friends.
I feel like I could show a lamb.
Right?
Behind these amazing opportunities stands the school board, tirelessly connecting the community and the district. The school board builds a bridge between what the community needs and what the district can offer, ensuring a spectrum of opportunities for students like Ryder. Therefore, Ryder's journey through the school district is a tapestry of experiences, thanks to the school board's commitment to connecting dreams with the resources that make them real.
Thank you. Order of the RGC's.
Thank you. We want to take a picture of you, with you, before you all leave, so nobody leaves, but before we go, I'm going to go a little bit of comments. Iliesar, comments? About school board appreciation and the kids.
Thank you very much, kids. Very, very talented kids about the school board. I'm going to say that, I'm going to start by saying that I love my community, mi raza. I hope I don't get criticized for saying raza, but you know what I mean. I was remembering the first time I told my mom that I was going to run. She was, "Tás loco, no te vas a meter en eso." And that's the very first time that I went against my mom's advice. And four or five months later, thank God I got elected, and thank, thank you guys. She's five foot one, five foot two, she was jumping like four feet up in the air. Yeah, so no, it is, it is, it is challenging. I mean, it's not easy. Maybe you can even hear my voice. I've been here for seven, going on eight years, and I'm still getting nervous speaking in front of you guys, so. It is fun. I like it. I like to serve, to help out. And seeing these kids, and I have three, four, four kids, it, it's make, it makes it worthwhile, so. Thank you, thank you for electing me, and thank you for everything that you've done. Hopefully, I've done the right choices, well, we. And, thank you, thank you guys, thank you so much. Kids, congratulations.
Mr. John Pope.
First and foremost, I want to thank God. I want to thank the community for entrusting us in this position. When I see something like this, I'm going on four years, but every time I see the children, you know, one, it makes me feel old, but number two, I'd like to see how these children progress and the successes they go through, and I wish you all nothing but the best. Stark County and Rio Grande City and Gruya have a lot of talent here, and I'm looking forward to seeing you all in ten years to see where you all end up. Thank you.
Mr. Noe Castillo.
Hey, guys, everybody, I thank you for that. That was awesome. You all just showed all of us what, what the school district, what education is about. Everyone up here has a different aspect in life and what we do, and it's all for everybody else, or it should be. And, you know, you guys make it real every time we do this, and it reminds us why we're here for, not anything else, it's about you all. So, you know, reach for the stars, God bless each and every one of you. You guys can do whatever you want to in the world, and always make a difference. Remember, it's always about everybody else except ourselves, so thank you all, and God bless you.
Mr. Ramírez.
First of all, I want to thank the students, of course, because I know that this probably took extra time away from your regular classes and schedules, and probably could have been doing something else, but it's just like everyone up here said already, it reminds us of the talent we have in our district, of why it is we do what we do, why we were elected, why we're here. We're here to serve you, we're here to serve the community, we're here to serve your parents, who are always behind you, teachers, principals that are here, directors, the list goes on and on and on, and it's a combination or culmination of a lot of different parts that gets us to where we need to be. And there's a lot that goes on in political world, but acts like you all just did right now is what reminds us that, at the end of the day, it's about the children of our school, it's about their education, it's about giving them all the resources we possibly can so they can accomplish any dream they have, and based on what we just witnessed here, that I know that you all can accomplish whatever it is you set your mind to. So for us, it's rewarding, it's an honor, it's a privilege. Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Mr. Jay Peña.
I'll start off by thanking the students for the wonderful presentation, and I'm going to remind you guys that every person that's sitting up here was once your age. I know that's hard to believe with all the gray hair that's up here, right? But I'd also like to extend my appreciation to the parents who trust us with our duties, to the community as well, for coming together. I love where we're heading, to the educators who navigate the curriculum, to administration who power through thousands and thousands of transactions. Those would be monetary, monetary transactions, to decisions on a day-to-day basis. People don't understand the machine that this school district is, and for making everything so digestible for us as a board to be able to make decisions. And so, I extend this warm thank you all, to you all in return. It's much appreciated with your, with your trust sitting on this board as well.
Dr. Barrera.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Well, thank you, kids and staff, for taking the time and organizing the sketch. It was, it was really cool to see. Thank you so much for that, and I'm going to take the opportunity to thank, not the kiddos, because they don't vote, but for all the parents and all the staff members that did vote for us and elect us to be school board members, thank you very much. And I also want to take the opportunity to remind everyone that we are here to serve, like others mentioned, and to put myself at your service, if there's things that you all need from us school board members, feel free to contact me personally or any one of us. I'm sure we all are out to help you all and to make things better for you all. Any administrator can probably, you know, send you all my contact information that's available for everybody. If anybody needs any additional information or questions or concerns, I'm here to serve. And I, I really would like to hear from, from you all, the good and the bad, of course, because it's part of being a school board member, hearing both, both good and bad. And so, reminding you that that's what we're here for, to serve, and thank you once again for, for giving us the opportunity of being here and serving in the board. Thank you.
On behalf of the entire board, let me first thank, I call it, the RGC GISD family. That includes every single person, administrators, teachers, bus drivers, custodians, you name it. The family is what makes all this thing happen. And you kids, without you kids, none of this would be possible. You are the reason that we're here, we are, you are the reason why this family of the RGC GISD family exists, because of you. And it's like somebody said earlier, I guess, Mr. Pope, we would like to see where you're going to wind up. I'm probably one of the oldest guys here, and I've seen some of these guys, they were like you, I saw them as an adult, but where you're going to wind up 10, or 15, or 20 years from now. But I'll leave you with one quote that a good friend of mine always says, you know, we're always playing golf, and he says, "Be somebody, be somebody." And what that means is, when you go out in life, all kids, be somebody, go do something with your lives that you can be proud of. But on behalf of this board, I want to thank everybody, all the family, all the parents, because at the end of the day, let's not forget, one of the most important things we have is our parents, and you kids, don't ever, ever forget, your best friends are your parents, and don't ever forget that. With that said, we're going to take about a 10-minute break, so all of you can go over there and have some. For all the parents, for all the kids, there's a lot of, they're all sugar-free, they're not, they're, they, you're not going to gain, they have zero calories, so you can eat as much as you want, so let's take a little break, so all of you can go. And parents, don't worry, you're not going to gain weight, okay? Thank you. Let's take a picture, guys, don't leave. At this time, if we can have all central office personnel, please report to the stage. All central office personnel, please report to the stage. Anybody else, central office personnel, please report to the stage area. At this time, we're going to continue with Board Recognition. I think Mayor Joel Villarreal has a proclamation, he wants to read, Mr. Villarreal.
Good evening, distinguished members of the board, Mr. Superintendent of Schools, Rio Grande City Gruya ISD family, and to all present here this evening, it is my distinct honor honor and privilege to be afforded this opportunity to join the Rio Grande City Gruya ISD community to honor, to recognize, and to celebrate School Board Appreciation Month. So thank you for your service, your dedication, your commitment. And although it can be challenging at times, to serve in your capacity, your service to our future generations and leaders of tomorrow is the legacy that you forge behind. For our students, past, present, and future of Rio Grande City Gruya ISD, are gifted, are capable, are intelligent, are determined, are successful, and we have, we are district champions, regional champions, state champions, world champions in academics, athletics, arts, theater, music, science, technology, engineering, and math, and other, a multitude of fields. And that was represented here today by our talented children, our future generations and leaders of tomorrow. It's really a blessing for what we have to offer. And the kids, wonderful, talented, and yes, I believe that they will be somebody. So our students are the future, and our future radiates brighter every single day, because they are the next generation of leaders. So thank you to our entire Rio Grande City Gruya ISD family, and thank you to our distinguished members of the board, Dr. Veronica Barrera, Eliazar Velasquez, Mr. John Pope, Mr. Noi Castillo, Mr. Eric Ramirez, Mr. Jay Peña, Mr. Basilio Villarreal. Once more, thank you, and as Benjamin Franklin said it best, "An investment in knowledge pays the best interest." So the School Board Recognition Proclamation, whereas the mission of public schools is to meet the educational needs of all children and to empower them to become competent, productive contributors to a democratic society and an ever-changing world. And whereas local school board members are elected by their community, members to do what's best for students, and whereas local school board members work closely with parents, educational professionals, and other community members to create the educational vision we want for our students, and whereas local school board members are responsible for ensuring the structure that provides a solid foundation for our school system, and whereas local school board members are strong advocates for public education and are responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and to the public's expectations to the district. Now therefore, High Mayor Joel Villarreal of the great city of Rio Grande City and our entire city commission, to hereby declare our appreciation to the members of the Rio Grande City Gruya ISD school board, and to proclaim January 2024 as School Board Recognition Month in Rio Grande City. And we urge all citizens to join us in recognizing the dedication and hard work of local school board members and in working with them to mold an education system that meets the needs of both today's and tomorrow's children. Once more, on behalf of the great city of Rio Grande City, congratulations, thank you, and God bless.
With that said, we will continue. Let's go to section seven, Reports and Information Update on Student and Staff Highlights.
Good evening, Mr. President, Mr. Peña, esteemed board members, and everyone joining us here today. To continue with the spirit of celebration, let this first video be a testament to the dedication and excellence that defines our school district. The month of December was filled with so many remarkable achievements and inspiring stories. Well, hey, Eddie, we're ready? Let's go ahead and see what the remarkable stories are that make our school district truly exceptional.
December was a sensational month, and January is shaping up to be just as great. HEB hosted the 20th Annual Feast of Sharing. A heartfelt thank you to everyone who attended. Migrant students ages three and four years were surprised with warm winter gloves, scarves, and toys delivered by Santa Claus. This festive celebration was also extended to a two-year-old migrant student. This notable event is attributed to the dedicated efforts of our A Bright Beginning and Migrant staff. Gruya High School, Mariachi Gruya de Plata secured second place. And Rio Grande City High School, Mariachi Cascabel placed third place. Gruya Middle School, Mariachi Juvenil de América also received third place. Congratulations, students. Curriculum and Instruction Department staff donated 78 coats for students as part of their emotional intelligence initiatives. Thank you to the CNI department for the kind gesture of kindness that the children felt as they received their coats. In honor of the Christmas spirit, all of our RGC GISD campuses and departments decorated their sites at the Fort Ringo Parade Field. The community was able to drive around the parade field and view their wonderful Christmas-themed work. Thank you to everyone who made their sights come to life. The Ringo Elementary UIL Invitational Meet was a success. We would like to congratulate General Ricardo Sanchez Elementary for placing first, Alberto Anzela Barrera Elementary for placing second, and Dr. Mario Ramirez Elementary for placing third. Our sensational superintendent, Mr. Adrian Fadbena Jr., hosted a Christmas luncheon at the Multipurpose Center as a special treat for central office faculty and staff, as well as campus administrators and support staff. The Superintendent's Attendance Challenge at Rio Grande City Gruya ISD officially kicked off on December 8, 2023. Students who consistently attend school will win a fantastic prize. This has been Danae de la Garza from Alberto Anzela Barrera Elementary at RGC GISD. We make experiences of a lifetime.
So there you have it, and of course, we do want to thank you all for your continuous support to make all of our endeavors a possibility. The next video we have is the construction projects, and you all play an invaluable role, of course, in all of our projects. And here's an update as to where some of our projects stand.
Thank you. At this time, let's go, that was item one, and item two, let's go to item three. Mr. Osuna, thank you very much for your presentation. Item three, Update on Construction of New Gruya Middle School, Mr. Delphino Garza.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Superintendent Mr. Peña. I'm here to give you a, to show you the progress of the Gruya Middle School. And we were there yesterday, so it's pretty much up to date. And let's see. Okay, our first slide shows you a drawing of our school. The circular area in the middle that's in the, is the administration. The wing to the left is sixth-grade wing. The one in the middle, the light green one, is the seventh-grade wing. The wing on the right, which is dark yellow, that's the eighth-grade wing. And then in orange, we have the gymnasium. And then the two other buildings between the sixth and the seventh, the one on the right is the cafeteria, and the one on the left is the fine arts. So this is the layout of the project, and now we're gonna see the photographs that go along with this. Right now, the blue, it's a moisture barrier, that light blue film you see on the ground, that's the sixth-grade wing. And they have the moisture barrier, they have dug out trenches with concrete beams. They haven't started on the steel reinforcing. And then behind the sixth-grade wing is the cafetorium. And then to the right of the cafetorium is the fine arts. These two buildings, both the cafetorium and the fine arts, are the ones, are the two buildings that are further on along in the construction. They're way ahead of all the other buildings. The next concrete pour will be the sixth-grade wing. So we foresee that that light blue tarp, it's a moisture barrier, will be poured in the next week or two weeks. And then the loop, the drop-off loop for the students is in front, there's some bar joists kind of in front of the loop. Okay, now I'm starting to pan from left to right on the project. So the left was the sixth-grade wing. Now we can only see the fine arts and not the cafetorium. The dirt between the bar joists and the seventh-grade wing is where the administration goes. So and the administration is the one that's further behind on construction. The administration has circular walls, and there's a lot of columns that go in there, and it's a more difficult process to lay out. So that, this one building was left towards the end. The seventh-grade wing is right, is in the middle, is a middle wing behind the admin building. And the admin building will be adjacent to and part of the sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade wing. So you will be able to walk inside those four buildings once they're up and going. And then the eighth-grade wing is on the far right. And then the gym is between the seventh and the eighth grade wings, it's further in the back. And they only have, they're doing the trenching for plumbing and for electrical. When they finish the sixth-grade wing, they're gonna go to the gym and start the foundation on that. So and then after the gym, they're coming into the administration. And now we're looking at the, at the far right of that plan that we had at the beginning. We're looking at the eighth-grade wing, and you can barely see, but way, way up there, where I'm showing that red arrow, they've got scaffolding and concrete blocks way up there. They're getting ready to build the gable wall at the far end of the eighth grade. So they're really moving on all of these projects. On the foreground, we've got steel bar joists, there's steel bar joists, and the steel bar joist is framing for the roof. Here, we're looking at a combination of different things, where you can just barely see the corner of the sixth-grade wing, which is that, which has got that moisture barrier. And then the seventh-grade wing further back, and then the eighth-grade wing, and there's a material of stacked block way in the back. And then the dirt that you see is where the admin area will go. This is a close-up of the moisture barrier. And what the moisture barrier does is prevent moisture from going through the slab and into the building. So this is what keeps moisture out. You can start to see the, okay, you can start to see the beam, one of the beams going right through here. The boards in here, the batter boards, which is the edge of the concrete, they're up here and over here. And then further away in the back is the cafetorium. And I think the Gruya High School is way back there. A little bit on the fine arts, the seventh grade, and then the admin in the foreground. Again, this is a perspective from the eighth-grade wing, looking at the admin, and then the Gruya High School in the back, and so forth. I want to get into some of the buildings, so I'm gonna go to the next slide. Okay, here's some of the construction that's going on. The picture on the top is a typical vertical reinforcing. We have the cells of the concrete blocks that are filled with concrete, and we've got the rebars going, and those rebars go into the slab, and that stabilizes the walls and gives you a solid building. The picture on the lower right, there's a wall about 30 feet high. To the right of the wall are the classroom areas. To the left of that little wall is the main hallway, and I believe this is the seventh-grade wing. And then finally, the picture on the bottom left is kind of on the other side of this hallway. The hallway is on that, the left-hand picture is on the right, and then the classrooms are on the left. Okay, here, more of the construction, and this is also inside the seventh-grade wing. The picture on the far right shows you construction joints on the foundation, and we have those construction joints that, they control the surface cracking on the concrete, and they stop it. The picture in the middle on the top, you can't really see it, but there's wall ties that are gonna tie walls that aren't built yet to the wall that's already built up. And then the picture in the middle on the left is more of the rebars that are, you know, bonded to the concrete slab. And then through these, through these rebars, they stack the concrete blocks as they're building the walls, and then they fill the cells with concrete. And then the picture on the bottom, they're isolating, there's two plumbing lines there, and they're copper. Copper oxidizes if it comes in contact with steel. So we always have to isolate copper lines So we always have to isolate the copper lines because of that. It's like steel that gets rusty. Well, copper also does that when steel is touching it. So we always have to isolate our copper lines. The picture on the, on the top left, again, the hallway in the middle, the classrooms on the right. And there's already a, a wall, whoops, wrong one, let's see. Okay, there's already a wall right in here that's already obscuring the vision of the other side of the hallway, which are classrooms. The picture on the bottom, more concrete control joints. And then the eighth grade wing, this is where the block is sitting up on the scaffolding. It looks like they're, you know, up in the sky somewhere, but there's actually scaffolding holding them up. Okay, the picture on the top left is a cafeteria. This is one of the entry, this is the entry of the cafeteria. The exit, you can't see. They're starting to put the bar joists on the roof on the cafeteria. All of these pictures are the cafeteria. And of course, our cafeteria has a stage, it's got a dining room, it's got a snack bar, it's got a serving area, and it's got a kitchen. So that, this is the progress on this building. And I think this is, this and the fine arts are the ones that are further ahead. But I believe right now, this one's getting ahead of the, the cafeteria is getting ahead of the fine arts because of the bar joists are already going into, being set on the, on the walls. Okay, this is, all of these pictures are for the fine arts. The one on the top left is the main entrance. The one on the top right is the back of the building, and there's a canopy that's missing there. And then the bottom left is the main ban hall. And then you can't see it, but the middle bottom picture, there's already electrical wiring going through the conduits. And then the bottom right picture is the primary hallway in the fine arts building. And these are progress on the site work. This is a carbon gutter for the loop. Asphalt paving with carbon gutter. And there's way, way in the back, can't see, oh, just hitting the wrong button here. Way in the back is the parking that's in front of the eighth grade wing. This is the eighth grade wing. And way back there is, I believe this is where, there's a maintenance building back there at the top of the hill. Progress on the site work, there's a lot, this week there's a lot of mud, but it's still, they're still working out there. More, more site work. And those two machines, those two machines up there were going at it at the same time. They were swinging dirt left and right. There was something to see. It was, it was like a dance, those machines were dancing up there. There's a storm, water inlet on the bottom picture. And they're cutting, continuing the loop around the campus. These pictures, the top row shows materials, and this is basically the steel bar joists for the roof. One of them has some, there's some steel deck that goes above these bar joists. The bottom left, there's block up there. The bottom right, there's insulation stacked up, and then more bar joists. And that's it. So that's where we are with the project. And it's moving along, they're working at it. And yeah, there's no stopping it.
Mr. Garza, I have just a couple of questions. Is that a lot of things float around in social media and things of that nature? Does this school that you already mentioned has a cafeteria, correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
It does have a kitchen, correct?
It does have a kitchen, yes, sir.
It has a kitchen and a cafeteria, right?
Yes, sir.
Because there's things going around that it didn't have a cafeteria, and things didn't have a kitchen. So you're, basically you're saying it has a cafeteria and a kitchen, correct?
That's right. Plus a dining, plus a serving, everything, cooler and freezer, everything goes with the kitchen, yes, sir.
Okay. Any more questions?
Sir, do we have a rendering that we could put up on our social media so everybody will see it? And just see it, and see it?
Maybe we have a social media guy here, or?
Yes. Jessica, Ms. Murillo. Our Facebook, we can go ahead and put the PowerPoint, and we can put the map of the school and the buildings that are up.
And can we emphasize there is gonna be a cafeteria, there is gonna be a kitchen? Because, you know, it keeps getting mentioned and mentioned, it doesn't have it. Well, in fact, it does have it. This is a full-fledged middle school. With that said, any, no other questions?
Mr. Garza. I did have one question real quick.
Yes, sir.
And it's more of a structural question. On the vertical reinforced walls for the CMU, is that only for the perimeter walls, or is that also for the interior classroom walls?
All of the walls.
All the walls, okay.
All of the walls.
And those extend all the way up to the top?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It goes all the way to the, to where the bar joists are.
So these are really, really strong buildings, I would.
If this is a wall, it's about every four to six feet, they've got the verticals going up. And then about every four feet, blocks have a horizontal beam as well, all the way up. So they're, they're solid walls.
Okay, but all of them, interior walls, everything? So in case of an emergency, or tornado, or hurricane, they would be pretty resistant, correct?
They're, they're pretty tough, yes, sir.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
If there's no other questions, let's move to item four. Report on TASB localized policy, EIC, academic achievements, class ranking.
Mr. President, members of the board, superintendents of schools, Mr. Peña. At this time, we're asking if we can leave that for the next regularly scheduled board meeting. We have some updates we're working on administratively. Thank you.
Not a problem. With that said, I think the rest of them are pretty, basically, they're housekeeping, so we're gonna switch to item eight, recommending of consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Nobe. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Mr. Robles, can you just, maybe just always, just put out who the donations, or who gave donations out, please? Not the amounts, just who gave.
Good evening. The donations for the month of January or November. Our Rio Motors Company, 26.2 Consulting Group, Eliezer Olivares, Una Bendición Home Health, Texas Cafe Maria Rebecca Garza, Adolfo Peña, Design Group International, Grande Butain, and Mr. Basilio Villarreal Jr.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
At this time, let's go to item, action items, item four. Can we approve item four, five, six, and seven as presented in our board packet? And we'll talk about any questions later. Do we have a motion?
So move.
On four, five, six, and seven. I'm looking for a second.
Second subject of discussion.
Discussion.
I think the only thing that I wanted to discuss were the plaques on five, six, and seven. I think if, if we could consider dating the timeframe back to, I think, fall of 2021, I think when the bonds were first discussed and resolved for. And I think if we do that, that we would include Mr. Dalinda Escobar's name on the plaques.
Why don't we do that? Why don't we go back to the year 2021 and include everybody back then and presently?
Yeah. And I think they can use asterisks to indicate years, year of tenure, or something like that.
I don't know. This is up for discussion, I, I.
It's just a proposal.
So then I would amend the motion, if there's no discussion, to approve items four, and then five, six, and seven, subject to that slight modification.
Four, five, six, and seven. Basically, going back to the year 2021, and I don't know who was in the board at 2021?
It was fall of 2021 is when we resolved to do the bonds. And then the bond elections were held, I think early 2022. But from there to when we.
Two present.
Yeah, I think that, anybody who had a tenure from that timeframe.
Okay, there's a motion. There is a second to that.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
One more thing, I was looking at that, and I noticed that it just said Architect Design Group International. Maybe it would be, I think Mr. Garza has done a lot of our work here at RGC GISD. Maybe it would be good to put, I mean, I know, instead of putting Laredo, Texas, maybe putting Mr. Delfino Garza's name, and then the design group. I don't think we need to put Laredo, but that's just, just something that I noticed that since Mr. Garza has been a stable here at RGC GISD, it would be good to have his name on right under the architect, and then his group. That's just me looking at it from the outside.
You want to amend that motion, then?
I think it's a good suggestion. I'll amend the motion to approves four, five, six, and seven, and with the modifications discussed to five, six, and seven.
I'll second. Second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. At this time, let's go to item eight, if we can have a motion to approve item eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12. And then we'll talk about discussion.
So move.
Second.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Castillo. Discussion.
I think just items 10, 11, and 12. Just want to note to Board Council, I know we have a policy of not waiving, 10, 11, and 12?
No, it's nine through 11.
It's eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12.
No, I think not, but in this case, I think it's 10, 11, and 12, it's just a jury trial waiver on those. I don't know if we're gonna go against our policy, the jury trial waiver, or we're gonna, because there's already a limitation.
That's for the architects and the engineers?
Yeah.
Yes, we have, as you know, we've had a, the county has had a pretty bad reputation for being lawsuit-friendly. And we have had long discussions with, I mean, everywhere, from Gerlock to Mr. Garza to all of the architects. And we have, unfortunately, we have agreed to mandatory mediation. And we know we've got one, two, we've got three attorneys on this, on this board, and then myself. And we know that most of these cases get solved, resolved in mediation. That would probably be the most effective way, so we have, for the architects and the engineers. That's the only way we could get anybody to bid on these projects. So we are waiving that part, not for the contractor, but for the architects and engineers.
Advice of Council, okay?
Okay. A motion on item eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12. We had a second by Nobe. Motion by Mr. Peña. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. At this time, item 13, considering take possible action on requisitions 5,000 and over. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Castillo. If not, all those in favor.
I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Garza, I'm sorry, I didn't hear when you were saying what items. Was it 13 and 14?
We're in item 13 by itself, right now.
Just 13, okay.
Only has 13.
Okay, no, nothing.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Item 14, and let me go to item 14 real quickly. Item 14 says considering take possible action on awarding the following bids. Okay, at this time, item 2419 is going to be, as recommended by administration, to be tabled. So that's not gonna be considered. Item CFP 2322, RFP 2423, and bid number 2424. Okay? Those are the ones that will have a motion to approve these items, and then discussion.
Motion to approve.
Second by Mr. Castillo. Now, any discussion?
On CFP 2322, I just didn't see any financial amounts breakdowns like the other ones had. Do we have any numbers? It just says it's like a one-year with a one-year extension if agreed by the vendor and the school, which is fine.
But no, no money amount.
It just didn't state the amount.
Good evening. Yes, I did not include that, but I know it is $10,418, if I'm not mistaken, per month. That's what we are paying, but I can give you the exact amount if you all want me to.
So is it the same as?
It's the same as a prior year.
So basically, we're not paying any extra money in any form or fashion?
No, sir. It's just an extension. Since it is for food service, we do need to do it on a yearly basis.
But this is without any additional cost, correct?
That's correct.
I'm sorry. For the 2419, I was wondering, because it says that, that there were no, no action recommended at this time. What's the reason?
The reason is that we got proposals from three different vendors, but we did not receive complete packets. So what we're going to do is we're gonna take no action and rebid it, so that way we can have a pre-bid conference with them, have a walkthrough with them to make sure that when they do submit, whoever is interested at the time, once we advertise, that they do submit everything and everything we need. So if they have questions, of course, we do allow them to ask questions when they're submitting proposals through our ion wave, the e-bidding system. But some things were not done how they should have been, so just, so we refrain from doing that. We're gonna go back, re-advertise, and make sure that we can meet with our vendors and that they have everything and anything.
So none of the packets were complete, sir? None of the packets that were turned in?
So they didn't, you don't have one of these for, those three bids for the fences? This is what you all do for each bid, right?
We do an evaluation, yes. So we did not include one, only because they were not complete. There was some things that were missing, some of the numbers went different from different vendors. So that's why we didn't include them. We wanted to make sure that we meet with them, if, of course, the same ones are interested, and others that would be, so that way we can be fair and, you know, across the board and everything.
So they're gonna have an opportunity to rebid and things of that nature?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So at the end of the day, correct me, if I'm right or wrong, safety fencing preliminaries, this has to, would this have to do anything with grants and things of that nature?
This will be funded through grants, yes, sir, that is correct.
So we have to, we have to make sure we do it right, correct?
Yes, sir. So that's why we're doing that, to make sure that it's across the board, that they're submitting what we need, that is required by.
Actually, I think that's a new Texas requirement, right? TEA requirement?
Yeah. But since I know we applied for some grants and we got some monies, we have to make sure that these packages are done in the right way, because once we submit them for the grants to pay us, if we don't have these things the way they are supposed to be, we're not gonna get paid for these things. So I'm gonna trust in your department to go do it the right way, so when we submit for our monies from these grants, that they will, that they would more than graciously want to pay us, and not have a problem that we didn't do it right, so they're not gonna pay us, basically.
Yes, that is correct. We want to be reimbursed for the full amount of the projects.
And try to expedite, because I think this one's really important.
Yes.
Okay.
And I just want to point out, I was happy to see that there was other biddings, not just, you know, the same that we see all the time, but then it's sad that that's not gonna go through. So I hope to see, again, a lot of bidders when we do this again. Hopefully, we have the same, do it the right way.
We have seen more vendors that are submitting, which is good, since we do have it through online, so more vendors are able to see it throughout the state of Texas, and of course, other vendors throughout other states as well.
Without a doubt, sir, without a doubt. It has to be done the right way, otherwise, we're not gonna qualify for the grants. And I trust in you that you're gonna do it the right way, put it in the right way. Hopefully, we get a ton of people that can bid, so we can get some good prices. But I trust, well, we as a board trust in you doing it the right way. But the most important part about that, this item, that it has to be done the right way, otherwise, the monies that have been granted to us will not be distributed to us, and as we do it the right way, correct?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Varian, I'd like to just emphasize, doing it correctly, yes. We did put out the specs in the bids, however, the people that bided them did not go through our specs. You know, some did, some did not, some submitted amounts, some submitted just totals. So, you know, it wasn't a mistake that was done on the district's behalf, it's just the way they were submitted to us, correct, Chris?
Yes, sir, that is correct. So that's why we didn't include anything on there, because the numbers were not gonna match.
So the good thing, we're not approving anything there that's being tabled. Any more questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
I have one question.
Okay, go ahead.
2424. That one's pretty significant, because we have a local bidder on that one.
I actually had a question for. I actually had a question for that, I don't, I don't understand, what is that?
Yeah.
I looked through it, but I don't understand what it, what is this, the catalog bid?
Yeah, she stole the words out of my mouth.
Can you explain that, Chris? I know what that means, but go ahead and explain, let him explain.
Yep, so the catalog bid is pretty much, we have vendors, as you can see, that are listed, they submit for us to have to be able to use them throughout the year, and it involves anything from trophies to certificates, awards, things like that, that's what the promotional is considered. That's why you can see where like some of the companies say like trophy and awards, promotions, because those are the things that these vendors provide.
And when you say catalog bids, why catalog bids, could I ask?
That's just the wording that they have whenever we're supposed to put out bids. I know we have for like parts and things like that, like plumbing and electrical, so they're just standard items that we request for pricing.
And is there a recommendation for any one of them at this time?
We're just recommending to approve all of them.
Are you gonna use a law?
Yes, because the campuses and departments, they'll reach out to them and get the best quotes, so we give them a list of the approved vendors moving forward, and of course, they get approved by you all.
And pardon my bias, but I always, I always prefer local. It always, it gives our local folks a chance, it keeps the money here locally, so I'm wondering if maybe the hub registrations and stuff would help them with some of these, with some of these selections.
I only see one, I think, from Rio Grande.
Yeah, there's only one, but.
And the reason for that also is because we do have some vendors that are through co-ops, so through Byboard, tips, and some of the actual vendors that are here are through those co-ops as well, but they also submit a bid, so that way they're not just on the co-ops for the state or for the US as a whole, for other states, but also they wanna be part of our local bidding.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, but let's say you wanted a, I don't know, a jacket or jackets, you basically take, I guess, three quotes, four quotes, and then you go to the lowest quote, making sure that they are the same product, correct, or something of that nature?
Yeah, you're comparing apples to apples, that's what we tell the departments and campuses when they reach out to these vendors.
Chris, real quick, on RFP 2423, I think sometimes it's good to put it out there so you can see how much we're actually saving, how much off these bids are, but you have the E-rate funding for the turnkey solution to K-Bing for the New Gruia Middle School.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, you have two for $197,000, one for $303,000, but the lowest one was NetSync at $190,000. I think sometimes it's good to actually say the number, so that was a big difference there on that one.
And, and just on that one, just so you all know, the district share is only 50% of that, so just so you all know.
Even better.
The good thing, we're going with the lowest bids on the bids that are bid, and catalog bids, they take three quotes, and then they take the best quote of the three, correct?
Yes.
Can I, can I ask, what was the past relationship with this vendor? Because I was looking over it, and that was one of the things, that it had a 15 points, and it had the max point, wait, was it, no, it was a, yeah, past relationship with the vendor, what other service did they provide for us?
Mr. Sainz? Mr. Sainz will answer that for you.
NetSync.
Dr. Villarreal, they've done, the past three years, they've done all the equipment throughout the district. They've been awarded E-rate, competitive E-rate bidding for the past three years, all the equipment, all the networking equipment in the whole district is Cisco, they're the ones that have provided it. As a matter of fact, right now, we're still on a $1 million E-rate two years ago, that they'll be installing, to start installing the equipment next week. So we've done, if you would put the pencil to it, about $2.5 million worth of business with this company. That's why they got the most points there. It's been, besides being low bid, they're a very good company, they're known, they have offices in the valley, in San Antonio, throughout Texas, it's a very well-known company.
Okay, thank you.
But let me ask Eddie real quickly, in looking at it, I'm just gonna throw out numbers, we're, in many cases, we're saving $7,000, and in other cases, we're saving $103,000, so, I mean, they are the lowest bidder, correct?
Yes, yes.
And they've done a good job for the district, correct?
They've done an excellent job. The other company that was in, that did a bid of $300,000, they were actually charging $120,000 for installation.
Well, we trust that you are recommending the best, and apparently, they seem to be the lowest bidder. You say they've done good work, and we have the trust in that, you're the director of technology, so at the end of the day, lowest bid, they do a good job, that should be good enough for?
Thank you for your confidence.
According to you, right, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you for your confidence, appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Mr. Villarreal, what number was that, 50?
These were?
14.
That was, the E-rate, but we approved them.
You know what, can I amend the motion? Because we tabled, so. That's correct, I need to clarify. Motion to table item 14, 24-19.
Okay.
And I also, we motion to?
Approve 2322, 2423, and 2424.
And we're paying some information on 2322.
Yes, and I will get that to you all, send it to Mr. Peña, so he can give it to you all.
Very well, thank you.
And just real quick, on, on the one that you all are tabling, would it be tabled or no action?
24-19.
What do you, what do you recommend, no action?
It'll be tabled, because you're gonna bring it back to the next.
Or do you think?
Well, it would be no action, no action.
No action, okay, let's, let's, let's do it again. CFP 2419, no action, CFP 2322, CFP, pass, to pass it, RFP 2423 to pass, and bid 2424 to pass. Do we have a motion that way?
That, aye, so move.
Second.
Second.
By Mr. Castillo. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item 15, I wanna, basically, to approve item 15 as presented, with one little caveat, that EIC Local Academic Achievement Class Ranking is, right now, that one is going to be tabled and brought back to us at a later date, because they need more work on that one. With that said, can we approve this one, with the exception of EIC Local Academic Achievement Class Ranking?
I shall move, Mr. President.
Second.
Second.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. At this time, can we have a motion to approve item 16, item 17, item 18, with a revision that was given to us a little while ago, and item 19, as presented in our board packet?
So move.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay.
With some discussion.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. At this time, under the Texas authority, the Texas Government Code, section 551.071,